All right, I'm gonna call a meeting. Okay, so I'll do it again, because I don't think I got recorded there. I'm going to call the meeting. Before getting started, I'd like to introduce a new member of the planning commission, Jero La. Welcome. Jay, you've spent a lot of time on the other side of this table, so welcome to the other. We're excited to have your perspective, your diversity in the conversation we have. Tonight's kind of an easygoing one, so we'll start that kind of easy on you, and then we'll really have some fun ones to talk through. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Sinclair.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrender.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, if it's to me, sorry, I'm in a bad spot.
People have to read public comment, they can't just listen or watch.
The other option, if you don't feel that's fair, is when we go to the section on public housing.
Think it's working.
There'll be another opportunity to speak then. No, I understand. Good, good point.
She says that we could hear it at the very beginning, but then lost.
Looks like the audio is working now.
Okay, Aaron says it is working.
Okay, so we have audio.
All right, I apologize for the technical difficulties. I think we might be there now.
Great. Someone want to text Aaron to let him know? There you go. Okay, great. All right, so we'll continue our meeting. Aaron, just by way of a quick update, we are going to continue where we left off, moving on past the public comment. If someone feels that they would like their public comment to be reread because you didn't hear it, that opportunity is going to be offered at the beginning of our work session item on housing. Okay, so we're moving to, well, I guess I should finish with, is there anyone else has public comment that has not already spoken? Okay, then we'll close that section and move to our first item. This is a discussion regarding a condition of approval, review of conditions of approval for the city of Cannon Beach's applications for the relocation of an existing emergency service cache site. Review condition of approval for the city of Cannon Beach conditional use permit CU 2402 and variance V 2405 for the purpose of relocating the emergency service cache site east of where the new police station is to be constructed, adjacent to the Toldono Main Line Road to tax lot 4106 B 100. Steve, may we have the staff report?
Sure, sure. So the plan commission had reviewed the proposal to relocate the cache site as part of the police station and construction. At that meeting, the plan commission approved the request subject to the condition that stated applicant shall provide planning commission with a tree report detailing the number of trees to remove and replanting replacement plan. Subsequent to that, the department's reached out to Jeff Gearhart from Treescape's Northwest, who's the city's arborist. And basically Jeff's letter is part of the packet July 29th. Says, per your request, I inspected the South Winds Cache Site located on the city property. The plan for this location is to relocate the Conex boxes that provide storage for emergency supplies. A site map photograph and ISA tree evalium form is attached. The development of this site will require the removal of all trees within the project area, approximately 300 trees. The trees present are young red alders ranging from one inch to six inch in diameter. The area was previously cleared approximately 10 years ago, and all of the vegetation present is volunteer growth. None of the larger evergreen trees present outside of the project area will be impacted, and I recommend replanting not occur at this location due to the future conflicts with the site's usage. So basically what staff was doing was bringing that tree report back to the plan commission as was requested.
So I mean, we've all had a chance to look that over. Were the concerns we had last time addressed by the commission?
Yeah, my concern simply was that we, as a city, do the same thing. We ask proposing our development, and I think they satisfied the condition. I would say we're done with that one.
So I, I agree, we want this applicant to fall under the same guidelines. I feel like though, after revisiting the site and looking at it and looking at kind of in reference of where his pictures are, that I didn't think the report was to the same level of completeness that we would expect from other applicants, because there was quite a few trees in there that looked within that same area that looked like they were greater than six inches in diameter that isn't reflected in his report. He just says one to six inches, and it's kind of just kind of plays it off as there's one to six inches, 300 trees, like.
Yeah.
And so I didn't.
Aaron, can you hear us now?
Yeah, we're awake, like now.
So stop live stream. I don't know what.
Maybe you could tell us if he can hear us. I don't know if he's. Okay, here he's answering. Now it's working. So it looks like it had just gotten inadvertently muted.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll start watching for the little red light on me.
Yeah.
Okay.
According to my wife, who I hope doesn't run over to him, the live stream though isn't feeding. It's not going to YouTube.
So yeah, anyways, I'll just, well, maybe I should wait for this.
Aaron, again?
No, that was someone walking past the ring doorbell. I can silence it, but it still vibrates.
It's okay. It gives me a lick.
Even if I'm in it, it wasn't, you know?
Interesting. Is there a delay on that?
There is.
There is a delay on YouTube.
It's a couple of minutes, a couple of minutes.
Oh, really?
Wow, interesting. Aaron, can you hear us okay? Thousand one. You're muted, Aaron.
I think if our mic looks like it's on, we're probably good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Aaron says it's all good.
All right. So we'll continue.
I don't think it's your fault.
Not touching anything once.
Step away from the keyboard.
Precious.
So anyways, getting back, I don't offer hope. Is it okay to?
Yeah.
Please. You know, they did have that opportunity to walk the site, and that's basically where the report was coming from, was they had the opportunity. And so just wanted to bring that back and was hoping that we could move forward.
Got it. Okay, so the initial concern was we wanted to make sure the city was being held to same standard or similar standards that we hold applicants to.
Right.
Initially, you're saying you're okay with it, hearing you say. Yeah, I mean, if that's, if they walked in and if it's, they actually hit the actual parameters of the lot, then yeah. Guess this is the kind of thing we need a motion on. Can we, can I get a motion?
Move, we accept the report.
Okay.
A second.
Any further discussion? Tessa, will you call the role, please?
Commissioner Bates.
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrender.
Yes.
Commissioner Matusik.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. Yes, 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 yes. Did it work?
We accept the text, too.
Commissioner Orloff?
Yes.
Sharon Nig.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our next item. It's a work session item. We'll do two parts before we jump into your section, Marcy. We will have an opportunity for public comments. And then at the request of Commissioner Orloff, he would like to make a disclosure about his involvement in this particular item.
I'll let you do that now. Okay. There, I do have a potential conflict of interest, and by state law, I have to state that. That does not preclude me from discussion or voting. I know that you guys do have to have a discussion on it after the declarations.
Could you state what you believe that's up?
I can, I have no idea what it may be currently or in the future, just by the nature of my public or private business. There is an under council of Oregon Ethics Committee. I have been advised to state the possibility of potential conflict.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna summarize what I think the conflict could be, and you can tell me if I'm wrong on that, and then we can have the discussion. So just broadly, the way I understand, if someone does say they have a conflict, this body has an opportunity to have a discussion around that conflict. If someone does not believe that that conflict allows that person to remain in the position, they may make a motion to override that. But there has to be a second, and there needs to be unanimous vote, or a majority needs to vote to approve that. So my takeaway is your business involves the several houses and commercial properties in town and the approval of them. And there may be a conflict in terms of the code may be more favorable to, a code that's more favorable to your business might be viewed, one could view you sitting up here as a conflict. Is that just kind of a thirty? Not very eloquently put.
Yeah.
But there's, there's the possible conflict. Do we want to have a discussion around there? How do people feel about that?
I, you know, I this is gonna be difficult for a while till we get used to it. That's, you know, Jay, until we get used to. I don't mind him, I don't mind allowing Jay to continue to participate in the discussion. I think we need to think clearly about it when it comes time to vote. I think his insights on the matter of housing are very important. But that, that conflict could be very significant. And I, and I, you know, and I, just on this issue, on how, the housing policy and code. So, you know, like I said, that's where I come down. Let's get his inputs, but in the matter of votes, I think we have to have him recused when that comes up.
Okay, thank you for that. Other thoughts, opinions?
I wish we had our attorney on. It would be super helpful to hear when potential becomes actual. So when we're doing legislative type votes, at what point do we worry about conflict versus not? I agree clearly if we change that backs, you've come to us before for variances on those items. That's, that's walking off the close to your business and potential income. So I, without an attorney here, I feel like maybe we can't necessarily even answer that question.
How do people feel about, well? Okay, so there's, there's a voting, there's a time when we're voting, and there's a time when we're not. We have a work session item in front of us. It's not a voting time, so.
I think that would be fine.
Maybe as a compromise, we're good with that, and we can come back to this and maybe have counsel onboard for the voting position.
I do think though, that when Marcy reaches the end of her presentation, she's gonna ask us for direction. Have we laid down a policy or a set of policies that we can, and are we authorizing us to proceed toward drafting? And that, I don't know if that's gonna, again, that would be nice to have counsel. That may require a vote. I don't know.
Well, why don't we take it as such if we feel?
Actually, we can't vote because anyway, we can't vote anyway, but she's gonna ask for.
Specifically work session.
She's gonna ask for, do you guys feel comfortable with where we're going? Are you, will you authorize us to proceed on the pathway?
I think if we get to a place where we feel like there's a conflict in any kind of conversation, we could take it to a vote if we needed to relative to any specific instruction to Marcy. Short of that, I feel like we could just have the conversation and sort of kind of go along. But if we do get to that point where we feel like there's an issue, we'll just bring it up, and I'll call for a vote.
Okay.
Does that sound fair to them?
Perfect, yeah.
Okay, good.
First of all, thanks for reaching out to the Oregon Ethics Committee. We appreciate that. Your question is right on as far as the attorneys. Attorneys weren't gonna be on tonight because it was a work session item that nothing was actually, action would be taken. So I would anticipate, first of all, you know, staff will probably be working with Jay from different things and maybe having some discussions prior to meetings in terms of that. But also if that ever comes up, the attorneys will be here to provide some guidance with regards to that. So I think tonight, just as a work session item, there wasn't, we didn't feel there was a need for the attorneys. Yeah, not that they're not important to be here because we're talking code, but we do pay for them, and we didn't think that it was necessary to see, thank you.
Okay.
So let's go ahead.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let's continue. We'll move to public comment. If anybody would like to come forward at this time to offer public comment regarding this code audit review, please come forward, state your name, your mailing address, and if you could limit your testimony to three minutes, we would appreciate it. Would anyone like to come forward at this time? Yeah. Where you go again?
I made a little amendments too, because I had this one. So this is great. Okay, Michelle Gallagher, P O Box 719. Not speaking for the DRB. I think that's what you're supposed to say, right? As a renter living and working in Cannon Beach and the only renter on the housing focus group, not to mention a good percentage of my social network is made up of the working class and hotel industry and service industry, et cetera, that also struggle with housing insecurity. I feel very connected with the housing issue that is across the country, but plugs Cannon Beach especially hard. I believe that increasing density and reducing parking requirements is a very good first step. I feel Urb's Works and the housing specialists they brought in made great suggestions. I like the idea of giving out FAR for incentives to build more duplexes or multifamily, family dwellings like the one I currently live in, that almost all of the dwellings on my street are duplexes and occupied full-time year-round. I have hoped that all the, I have hoped that our downtown could become more of a community hub and the beating heart of Cannon Beach. I hear, I heard one of the focus group members say on Monday, people like downtown because it goes dark at eight o'clock at night, and it feels like Disneyland. Well, no one lives in Disneyland, and as someone who has worked for the company, I've been in the park after close, and I have to tell you all, it's creepy. I know, I know that density is what some people that call nimby's is most fair word. Without change, you can't have change. The world's a very different place than it was 30 years ago, not much, much less five years ago. I believe we can retain the character of downtown. I mean, that's what we have a DRB for, with some much-needed updating to the code. And then it occurred to me, what I'm adding, is that maybe people don't actually know what middle housing is, and it kind of seemed like a little bit of a problem in the focus group. And middle housing is, has to range of options for people. These options can include duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, fourplexes, bungalows, cluster homes, and cottages. Missing middle, that's what it's called, is a missing middle because we have not a lot of middle housing, is often more affordable than single-family homes and can create more walking, walkable neighborhoods. The benefits for middle housing, it's affordability. Some people can afford just single homes like me. And it creates density. Missing middle housing can help increase residential density and create more walkable neighborhoods, and reduce parking. Missing middle housing can also reduce the need for excessive off-street parking spaces. I know that I don't want to have to prove what I make to live in affordable housing. I know a lot of people don't want to have to worry about making too much money because they're gonna lose their housing. So I think that a lot of these suggestions are really good suggestions, and we need to update our code. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time?
Sebert Warmond and West Warmond, P O Box 778 Cannon Beach. Dear Planning Commissioners, again, we're concerned about the affordable and workforce housing issue in Cannon Beach. How are the suggestions being offered in your packet legally deemed be for those needing affordable or workforce housing and to remain so? We were told the reason we update our housing code was for the developing and workforce housing. Please do not move forward with any of these changes until these designations are fully assured. Otherwise, we will be again without affordable or workforce housing for those who need it. Thank you. And P S, we thought that three stories was off the table for our Cannon Beach downtown due to a lack of consensus in the housing focus group. Why is it still mentioned in your packet? And P P S, where is our community commitment to caring for our environment reflected in the proposed code changes? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward, or is there anyone else online who'd like to make public, offer public testimony at this time? No hands? Okay, then we will close the public comment section and move to the Airworks Report, please.
Stand up so you can hear me better. And Steve, are we able to pull the packet material up?
Oh, Marcy. Yes, we are.
I think it would be helpful to walk through this, just so everyone, you know, finds it's not that long, and I think I can try to explain what this, you know, memo is trying to do, and it I also want to respond as we go to a couple of comments that have been made about the material in here. So first of all, we're, we're not asking you to take a vote. This is a work session. What I am trying to do with this document is untangle a lot of really good decisions that has occurred at the Sherrett and since Sherrett by the Housing Focus Group. And there have been a lot of, there were a lot of concrete decisions that were, I should say, direction that was provided to me at the Sherrett in May, and then we've had the four times since with the Housing Focus Group, and there's been additional, I should say, you know, some, a lot of debate about what we talked about, additional ideas, concerns about whether we're going to get the affordable housing that we want. And I think there's also come to, I've come to understand that people misunderstood the term middle housing at the Sherrett. So some people assumed that when we were talking about middle housing, we weren't talking about the form of housing. Middle housing is, according to most people in the, in my business, as well as the House Bill 2001 or the housing bill, it's a type of housing. It's everything between a single dwelling on a, on a lot detached, on a lot, and apartments. And the way the House Bill defines it is it's duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters. That's it. And accessory dwelling units is not considered a form of middle housing. So these are forms of housing, but not, it's not workforce housing, it's not, you know, target, it's not a, as Alyssa has said many times, Alyssa Kertler, has come to you at the joint commission meetings, the housing authority person at the county will say, the middle housing is about what we can do with the zoning code. Who gets the housing and how you make sure that you make it, you, you set up an eligibility standard? That's another, you're not done in the zoning code. So another thing that I tried to do in this memo was separate those things that the zoning code is specifically set up to do, and those things that, not to say you cannot do them, but they are not typically part of the zoning code, and we will have to do some extra things to make those happen. So starting at the top then, Part A is about implementing the direction from the main housing threat. I can give you an overview of what's in the document. Inside that piece of Part A, there's what we talked about for middle housing for the R1 and R2 zones. And then there is a short section of what we discussed for the downtown mixed-use sites. And if you remember, the Sherrett was set up to look at specific prototypes where we tested how your current zoning code works right now, where it could be improved in order to get more of the housing type that you want, which in the context of the Sherrett was middle housing forms, not guaranteeing though that those would be for only people who make, say, under 120 AMI. That would be workforce housing or for permanent or long-term tenure. Let me just back, circle around though to say that one of the things we discussed after the Sherrett was there were a couple of ways that we could ensure that this new middle same forms, duplexes was the form that we settled on, would not be a short-term rental, and that was by closing down the short-term rental rule. So we're doing that at the same time, and that, you'll see that short-term rental is in this packet as a compliance measure because we want to move it out of the zoning code, according to business licensing instead. And we will probably be, after that is done, looking at the upper limit of short-term rentals. So we're trying to control the number of short-term rentals, and specifically in the zoning code, we can say that any of this middle housing that's going to be permitted under the proposed amendments is not eligible for short-term rentals. So we're closing off that loophole in the zoning code. But there continue to be concerns about that we, you know, there's a group of people who are concerned that Cannon Beach, I should say, really, I will fairly say that every member of the Housing Focus Group is concerned to varying degrees about the fact that Cannon Beach is so sought after as a place to build, that if we make it easier to build duplexes, and if we waive parking to make that happen, that you will still see homes that are built for, but not for people who live here. And so then we talked about the vacancy tax, as you know, as a way to set up a separate program that would actually disincentivize building homes and then using them for wouldn't distance, it wouldn't, it would probably still, someone who wanted to build a second home here using these new rules could definitely do it. But at least it would create a way of collecting funds, and those could be set up to, to create more affordable housing. So those are, that was another solution that we came to. So, sorry, back to the packet. If I go through the proposed amendment and concept for future consideration, I'm gonna talk about the things that came out of Sherrett one by one. Starting at the top of middle housing, proposed amendments, we talked about reducing the floor area ratio to 0.35 for one unit and 0.5 for two units. And you, you all know that your existing FAR is 0.6 for 5,000 square foot lots. I'm gonna go straight down the left side list. We talked about reducing the parking requirement to one per unit for housing and allowing on-street parking to count toward that parking requirement where on-street parking could be provided. We allow dormers to be exempt from floor area ratio calculation limits. And this will require working with staff to, space and a few other indices of the code, including the building code. We talked about eliminating the ADU size requirements for primary and accessory, really dissolving the difference between what's a primary and what's an accessory, simply allowing two dwellings to be on the lot and to be the same size, as long as the total meets the requirements for height setback and floor area ratio. We also talked about allowing any configuration of allowing them to be stacked or attached or detached. And in fact, we thought that latitude would enable people to avoid trees or wetlands more easily. We talked about allowing by type one procedure, the reduction of front and rear setbacks by five feet. We talked about allowing by type one procedure, the reduction of front and rear setbacks by five feet, so not requiring somebody. To go through to sign a fee for that. And explicitly saying that new dwelling units are not eligible for short-term rental licensing. So that was on the R one, R two, middle housing building form. Yes, or proposed amendments, and held for future considerations. These are not on the list for proposed amendment, but just kind of being held for future consideration. An F A R bonus on a graduated scale, so you get a little more F A R. If you build a third or a fourth unit. And also. One and another, the other item on this list was requiring that new construction actually meet the minimum density. So that you would have to build two units if you took advantage of these regulations. So now I would like to talk about the downtown mixed use sites. The proposed amendments that came out of the threat there are, were allowing options for meeting the current landscaping requirements. Instead of horizontal landscaping in the parking lot, for example, allowing some alternative forms of landscaping like green walls. Because when we modeled this, the downtown regulations on actual, on the actual prototype site. It was impossible to get really any units at all, and really the entire site was parking and landscaping. We, so clarification, I want to make sure people understand that on Hemlock, we did discuss a third story, but only within a dormer. And we used Whitebird Gallery and a couple of other buildings on Hemlock as examples. And I can later pull those images up that we just used as our, in our discussion. We also talked about not only allowing residential only. So buildings that only have residential in them from top to bottom would only be permitted behind the courtyards at the rear of the sites. Kind of like the house behind the Saltwater Toffee Place. Right now, you require that any building in that downtown zone have retail on the ground floor. But if you would like to see some housing in downtown, it's reasonable to limit that stacked. Requirement only for buildings facing Hemlock. We need to eliminate density restrictions, eliminate airway parking requirements for housing. And again, ensure that all new dwelling units that take advantage of these amendments would be not eligible for short-term rental licensing. And these, on the right side of the column are things that are being held for future consideration, and that was establishing a maximum building width on Hemlock. And eliminating mixed use requirements for buildings on Spruce Street also. And on Hemlock, allowing a third story behind a step back as opposed to a dormer. So instead of behind a sloped roof with a little dormer sticking out, this would be allowed to be behind a step back. There would still be a requirement to have a step, that was not, that didn't go ahead. And allowing a three-story building behind courtyards at the rear of the site, so allowing three stories, but behind. At the rear of the sites, not on Hemlock. So, those were the things that came out of the Sherrett and I wanted to pull them together and write them out very specifically. And then list part B, the additional concepts that have been developed for. Consideration, and if you are okay with me just continuing on, I'll go through them, otherwise we can halt for some discussion of part A. How would people like to?
I would, why don't you finish?
So, part B, and these are listed in, not in any particular order, it doesn't represent a priority. And there's one item in here, number four, that I want to say did not come to the full, was not a topic that was brought up at the whole. Housing focus group is something that Mike talked to me about and I wanted to include it, just to get it on the table, so.
Actually, we did talk about it in housing, we didn't reach any consensus on it, it was just.
Part of this general color. So, number one is limiting the applicability of that parking relief, those provisions that we discussed, that is. Waiting parking or allowing on-street parking to count. Those would, that would only be provided if you're providing dwelling units that meet affordability or tenure targets. So. And that, that I believe people wanted to see that in place for both downtown units. As well as residential sound units. Number two was to establish housing tenure or affordability targets, I separated this one out because. We have to look at it separately, as I keep, as I said earlier, it's not something that zoning codes typically do. And so to, we have to be aware of that as we go into this, I. Been researching this a lot and cities are starting to do this more for the same reasons that you're interested in doing it. And yet there are some applicability and, you know, record-keeping burdens that we would, you would undertake by doing this. So I just wanted, let's just talk about that. Or I looked at two cities, Ashland, still much larger than you, but small, a small city relatively. And Portland, which is, you know, kind of in another realm, however, they are both doing this, they're both. Requiring that housing that takes advantage of certain zoning allowances meet affordability targets. Or tenure targets, so in Ashland, and I have a link in here that didn't work. So if your people are interested in actually having the link to this provision, test it, consent it out. Ashland defines housing that's eligible for various benefits, such as systems development charge, just favors and density bonuses. There doesn't really matter what you, you know, what the zoning code is allowing, that the issue here is how are you going to define it? And then how are you going to track it? Ashland does that by, actually in their zoning code, they have HUD maximum rent levels and they update those annually. So in the, in that case, they're actually checking people's income. Which is something, again, to think about, to think hard about. There's also regulating by tenure, so making sure that the housing that's being built is only for long-term. Rental, say, or ownership. And so Portland is doing that as part of their affordability and owner occupancy R two of the four public benefit provisions. That they detail in, in their exemptions policy. Now, in the case of Portland, they don't do this in their zoning code at all, they have a separate housing title. That sets up the targets that they're trying to meet, defines precisely how they are. What the thresholds are and how they have to be proven, and that housing title is managed by a housing authority. These involve things like deed records and things that are typically not by planning staff. So those are two ways you could go and two ways that cities are doing it today. All right, so the third one is allowing, there was some discussion, I think. About how non-conforming provisions downtown might be in answer to the concern that we've discussed many times. Say, if Whitebird Gallery burns down, they would not be able to be rebuilt with the housing units above. Because they provide adequate parking according to your current parking requirements. But it was brought up that, oh, our non-conforming provisions would allow you to do that. So we looked more closely at those and found that they don't do exactly what you think they're going to do, they need to be fixed if we're going to safeguard. You know, rebuilding. Or even many of your commercial buildings don't provide enough parking just for commercial use. So that we put the non-conforming provisions on the list of code amendments that. We can discuss those. Suggest we try to discuss that tonight, but that's definitely on our radar, is to fix that. Next is providing tree code relief, this is number four, for housing that meets affordability or tenure targets. So once you were able to establish what or whom the housing must be and how you're going to threshold that. And how you're going to make people prove it, once you do that, you could also do something like allow. Housing that's meeting those targets to bypass the multi-step tree evaluation process. You could also use, establish in the tree fund that I assume is going to be created by the in-lie fee. You could establish a sponsorship program for, where the tree. Removal or in-lie fee that has to be paid is paid for out-of-fund. So again, if that goal is to remove the burden of tree, the tree regulations from. Your tenure targets. And the last one item is to establish a separate housing title, so getting these thresholds and. Like I've been saying, how you, how are you going to, how are you going to establish it? And how are you going to prove it, to whom does it apply and what kind of documents are you going to require, is it tenure, is it affordability or both? Maybe don't do that in the zoning code, maybe establish a separate housing title, because these are things that you may want to update and change. As some, it has been discussed that this is a very scary thing to be doing. We want to, we do want to encourage more housing, more affordable housing, but more housing generally of the kind that could be more affordable. That is middle housing, smaller housing, duplexes, for example. But people are worried that you're going to be overrun. And so how do we? Go through this very slowly with a tool that establishes tenure targets or affordability targets. But maybe when you see that you're not getting. The housing that, maybe you're not seeing any housing, maybe because you've made it so difficult, maybe you could pull back a few of these other tenure. Affordability targets, that would be easier to do if it's in the housing title rather than in the zoning code. Or maybe you decide that you'd rather apply it just to a certain area and relieve another, for example. There was also discussion of applying the. Hemlock oriented for housing provisions, but to Spruce instead. For now, let's not apply them to Hemlock, this is another idea that just came out of the last housing focus group. But later you could say that you would like to. Allow Hemlock to, to be eligible for those same zoning regulations, new zoning regulations. So I know this is a lot to think about, I've done my best to try to untangle my session and make it more clear. And to make the choices a little bit more discreet from each other.
You ready for questions?
Yeah, sorry. I'm waiting to hear what you think.
Thank you. Can I provide a summary, and Eric, feel free to join. And she hit everything just perfectly, I can't, I mean, the thing is, it's so complicated, it's gone on for a long enough time with enough discussion. That it's easy for somebody who's been in the discussion to visualize, but not, maybe not those who have not been. So, we all agree we need to do something different, that's unquestioned. What's, what we're, what we're discussing right now is, and that's what she had, Marcy's last point, do we do it all at once? We jump in and just do everything we discussed in the Sherrett and not concern ourselves with. How the houses are used or any of that stuff, or do we start slowly? As she said, and maybe try to target our incentives and benefits only to the type of housing we want. That realistically is where we're at at this point, and that's what I think. Marcy laid out very well in detail, there are still some open questions, it did come up late. There are people who do not believe that Hemlock is where we should experiment with mixed-use housing right now. We could in the future, it makes more sense to move it to Spruce among, to some of us, and I would say Michelle. Has been on the other side and Eric a little bit. And we don't know where Brandon sits on it, but. But the discussion.
It's a mixed group.
Yeah, anyway, there are some of us who feel like we need to start on Spruce because we can restrict that to a specific area. And if we make a mistake, it is only there, it doesn't mess with the asset that we have in terms of downtown. There are others who think we should build a downtown that meets the needs of the future, that is. A meeting place for people to go and have drinks and sit out and enjoy themselves. I don't disagree that we should have that discussion about how we use our downtown. But where I get concerned is we've been focused on housing and those of us who are concerned that. Mix you should be on Spruce and not Hemlock, figure, you know, we're talking about a matter of fifty feet. So that is an issue that we haven't resolved. And then the tree place, I put that out, I, I did it selfishly. And I did it because I don't think, it makes a tree code that puts teeth into the obligation to replace or pay in lieu of replacing. It, it makes it easier for the city to accept that, knowing that for targeted housing, we would be willing to back off that and not put trees over people. But I want, the point I want to make is, we're going to build housing, it's going to, it's going to proceed apace. It's been proceeding apace for the last twenty years and all that time without restriction, we have had no affordable housing. Now, as, as we decide whether we go slow or we go fast, I want to keep that in mind because those houses are going to go in. And they're going to be middle housing themselves if we stick to thirty-five percent F A R. They're going to be very close at least, and we will add duplexes, and if duplexes work with the incentives we offer, then we might consider other things. But the, the line that's been drawn and the place where we're having difficulty and where we need help from everybody here is. We take a slower approach that gives us a chance to control. The development in a way that meets the character of the city, or do we just turn, open it up and hope to get middle housing out of it? That is the direction we need.
I'm, I'm, my understanding is the slower approach reference is to developing what we want out of. This is split up into part A and part B, so you've got part A, which is the physical code, part B is policy situation of it. And finish, finish developing what we like of part A. And then not implementing until we've fully developed the ideas that are in part B and then rolling out together, that's, that's my understanding of.
I think so, or if we could do, if we could do both at the same time.
Yeah, either, either way, but not, not rolling them out as separate. Parts to, to the discussion, I, I believe that's kind of where we got to at the end of our discussion at the last meeting.
So that, with that background, then I think Marcy did a wonderful job, thank you, Marcy.
So as somebody who doesn't have the background, obviously you two are very much in sync. I, I'm not even clear at this point, so I understand that middle housing is actually not a. It doesn't describe who lives there, it describes the house, okay? So what do we want, okay, are we, you threw out affordable, there's workforce. I've been led to believe that those are different things, what do we want in this town?
Well, we, we started with, we wanted it all, I mean, that was where we started and we had three really case studies that we addressed. Each one would give us a different kind of housing, or theoretically it was, the low fruit for us was low-cost housing. In a land trust, somewhere where we could build ten or fifteen units. That would be available for people at, say, eighty percent of the average median in, income or lower to, to live.
So that's the definition of affordable.
It's close, you have to ask Mars, it's.
It's one, one, it's one bar.
Yeah, yeah, it's one bar. And then workforce, workforce housing is from sixty or eighty up to a hundred and twenty. And middle housing is just how you try to fit into those brackets, right? Everything else above one twenty is basically market housing.
But I think also, we heard a lot of testimony in our joint sessions, and I think even before us as a body. That the majority of individuals here in Cannon Beach are not as worried about. Whether it's a particular income level as they are, that it's available for people who live and work here. So it seems as though, my sense of the testimony that we received from the public was that the main priority right now might actually be. All of that spectrum, not worrying about income as much as, is this someone who lives and works here? Because there are so many second homes, and I'm not talking just short-term rentals, I'm talking about people who own second homes and are not rented most of the time. And I think part of our, our issue here is we talk about, well, we can just limit short-term rentals, that doesn't solve the problem. Part of our, our issue here is we talk about, well, we can just limit short term rentals. It doesn't solve the problem because. I believe as our last packet for the joint session had a pie chart. Short term rentals are far less than second homes. So the concern is if we build middle housing, we build middle sized second homes. So if we were to roll out the changes in part A without some thought about how we ensure. That that remains available to the people who live and work here. We've simply allowed more people access to the second home market.
Absolutely. And what Marcy was trying to say, there are two ways to do it. One, you can measure income with. I don't think any of us are in favor of doing. The other is look at tenure. Either it's the, the units, if it's a duplex, one of the units is created is lived in by the individual who built it. Or that individual agrees to make one unit available for long term rental. That's the hook in addition to the restrictions on short term rental that start to give us the kind of housing we want, but it will never. Our best thought, our best option to get low cost housing, which. Affordable housing is the land trust somewhere in this community. With infrastructure that somebody who is in the business of creating low cost housing and managing it can. Can build a community. And we just don't have that skill, skill set yet.
And I wasn't promoting that. That wasn't what I was. I didn't think that was what I heard, but I wanted somebody to, to say what we want. I hear lots of different phrases and I'm just understand half of them. Tenure was one of them that, that I was going to ask about. So. Is, is it, is it adequate to ensure that a unit or half a duplex is rented long term? Does that achieve the same thing as making sure that it's being rented to somebody that lives and works in this community? I'm not sure that it does. Maybe it does. I just don't know.
Well, we have, we have examples. Unfortunately, we can't ask one of them to, who is renting, I believe.
What do you mean? We can ask.
Michelle.
We're in a workshop. We can ask.
Answer the, how do you respond to that question? Can you?
You were saying.
So, yeah, Michelle, and Michelle lives right down the street. So my question was, is it sufficient to ensure that, that. A duplex or whatever gets created is available for long term rent? Is that sufficient to keep it available for the people who actually live and work here? Or is it just going to be a rental place that somebody could rent that wants to come? Out to the beach. I, I somehow I always thought that there would be some way to. To tie this back to, to actually knowing that, that, that the people who were renting actually had jobs here. And wanted to be here. And I know I'm not hearing that and maybe it's not possible.
I think that goes all over, all over the.
And I don't know if you'll be able to hear me. Sorry, Michelle, I'm cutting you. Aaron, you may not be able to hear. Give us just one second. I'll come right back to you. Michelle is, Michelle's answering a question here. You've probably, I don't know if you can hear that or not.
I don't see if there's a lot of people just renting their second homes, their, AKA Robert said the other day, trophy homes, which is a kind of. Interesting way to call them, but I know a lot of there like several people. Like Amber works from home, but she works outside of town. And then a Batel who was born and raised here is a traveling salesperson. And she has to go away and come back. She comes back for three days a week. So I don't think you, I think it's, I don't think it's going to be a huge problem.
What I've heard you say, Michelle, is most of the rental units that we have in this community are rented to people who want to be in the community. And the problem is. They're being shut down systematically. For money.
So just, just the availability of housing for people that want to be a part of the community, whether it be working in the community or just. A part of the community, doing, doing whatever is more beneficial to us as a town than an empty home.
And I would say this has particular significance in Cannon Beach because we are so land limited. So we're not like a large city where we can say, oh, sure, if we build enough units, some percentage will become available. There's so few opportunities in our city to actually add more units. That each one of those units has more significance as we add them and we need to make sure it's done right. Because by the numbers, we can't just rely on the fact that we're going to be able to add so many that we're going to increase. By a certain number of units, just by chance that some of those become for people who want to be a part of the community, as you say.
We haven't been able to do it in our history. I mean.
Aaron, did you, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes.
Hold on one second, Aaron.
I'm in a bad spot. I don't know if you can hear me, but.
Having trouble hearing you.
Steve, can you change the speaker? Cause it sounds like it might be coming out of the computer speaker rather than.
His, his shows his microphone still.
It's not the microphone, the speaker that's.
Give us one second, Aaron. We're having a, just a little.
It's like he's muted.
I, we, I can hear him.
I think it's just coming out of the computer.
Is he on your computer or? He's coming out of one of your computers.
So if we look at the speakers, maybe.
About now. Aaron, give it a shot.
That's a different speaker.
Uh, we, we're getting warm. Just hang on one second.
Okay.
I can scream really big now.
Go ahead, Aaron.
So I, I just wanted to say that there, without getting into the weeds, fair housing laws are going to really limit. Our ability to say this unit is happy.
Aaron, we've lost you. I, I heard as much as you saying, fair housing, and I think that's a really valid point. But I didn't hear the rest. You, you cut out almost as if you were losing cell reception there.
It's still coming from here, it sounds like.
Is, are you supposed to get call in?
I think his point is fair housing isn't going to allow us to say you can, but you can't relative to, do you live or do you work locally? I, I, I think that's why the importance is, is occupation. Occupancy of the, of the, not occupation, occupancy of the home is something. I don't, I'm not a fair housing law expert, but I'm, I can't imagine there's something that restricts you from saying. If you have it, you have to live in it. Or you have to rent it or something.
Unless you can tie it.
Yes.
And by the way, Aaron's going to be home soon. He's going to speak up then.
We'll give you another shot, Aaron. I'll hold on tight.
So he, he's driving. I think if, I think it would be interesting to ask our attorneys if the give back was in return for. So it wasn't a blanket. Nobody can build a house unless, because that I could see being a big problem, but for instance. If you got a setback reduction because you were contributing. A unit of housing for people who want to live in the community full time, that may be different than a pure. Nobody can build a structure unless it's going to be used this way.
Right. That's a, that's a powerful tool is, and especially parking, I think. It's a huge tool. It makes those economically viable versus just not.
It was the intention of part B that it would be a handshake. It would be a deal. You know, you can get more of all of this stuff that you have to agree to make one unit available for local.
And, and a discussion that, uh, that Steve and Robert have both brought up in terms of, of this is, uh. Actually, the implementation, what, what does it take from planning staff or. Setting up a separate, secret, separate housing board to, to manage it. Where, what, what are the resources that would be required to administer? This sort of thing to ensure that it actually is occurring and it's not just, oh yeah, I'll do it. And then it just never happens because there's no one checking in on it or no ability to check in on it.
Right.
We, we've, we've identified, and Steve has been very clear that this resource is limited and we've been careful last half, but.
It's not even the resources. It's also the continuity of staff and people just like. Turnover and being able to, over time to make sure it's done as well.
Right.
You know.
It, it could be like anything else in this community though. We have rules and we have problems with enforcement, but there are tools. Available to us to do this kind of easily, like, you know, just show us that. Send them a letter, say, give us a certification that your unit's been occupied. They might lie, but at least we're doing something whereas, you know, with a lot of things we don't.
Well, the next step is it's, it's occupied and that that tenant meets the, the income requirement.
No, we're not, we're not going after anything.
I've seen that done in jurisdictions. Now, it might, it might have been changed, but annually, the property manager sends in a report, shows what the rent is and do they make. And, and testifies.
That's pretty much what Sea Lark is doing right now. It's one of the few, um, affordable housing. Recent ones that took advantage of it and they provide. Those numbers every year to what rents they can charge based on the, uh, income restrictions. So that is one in, in the city that occurs every year right now. And I think that agreement, I don't know if it was 10 years, but it's only X amount of years that after that 10 year period. You know, the agreements, they could do really what they want at that point in time. So I think, you know, what we talked about a lot of times too, is it might be easier when we're given some of these give backs. Is when it's new construction or new projects, because then might be the time you can get the deed restriction. You can get things that prolong that period for the give back. My concern about the zoning ordinance do that, to do this, as you can see, like the two examples, a lot of times the zoning ordinance is. Setbacks, offsets. It doesn't always talk about the affordability aspect of the construction. So I think oftentimes when the development would come in and if we are giving certain things, I think the conditions of approval need to be deed restrictions. And things of like that, because I don't know how else we guarantee it.
Would a separate housing code to you be more easily administered?
You know what? I don't know the answer to that right offhand. Um, it, it may. Because now there's an additional section outside of the zoning ordinance that's more related to that, that we don't presently have. And so maybe, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think truthful on the answer to the question.
Definitely help us adjust as either we're wildly successful or not successful to, to tailor.
No problem requirements.
Uh, Steve. Steve, what are the current system development? What's an average system that would charge for a house? And I'll put you on the spot here, but.
So I'm going to put you on the spot. Uh, SDCs, when we're looking at some of those fees, I mean, we're talking six, seven grand. Seven hundred dollars.
No, I'm sorry, just under $10,000.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. So it's a, a significant for sewer, water, you know, um, that's what those are used for.
Yes and no. If I'm building a, a larger couple million dollar house, that is not significant.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I guess where I'm going with this thing is it would be nice to compare that to, well, I, yeah, here it is. It would be nice to have some sort of comparison to what, I think along with our code, we probably should marry, you know. How it's applied so that it has some teeth to it or it has some incentive to it. So that when someone does look at a pretty hefty SDC to build another house versus they could build. Housing and get a break, it's, it, it seems much more financially motivating.
I agree with you on that. That is, uh, um, an incentive to, to multiple houses would be the SDC fees. They're part of the highest part of the permitting process. And, um, you know, if you're looking at, you know, one or two houses on a single lot. To have a break in that development would encourage that development and then the cost of that development. There are other financial, this is a financial incentive and we haven't really discussed them, but I think it's a good thought. I don't know how that would affect you guys, but.
Go ahead, Jay.
I, I, you know, I'm thinking of all this that we're discussing and the basis is where is this going to happen? Where are we going to try to incentivize the multiple duplex or, um, multiple housing units? R1, R2 zone, we have a very limited availability of any open lot in here. 1%, 2% of our lots. And going along the lines, you started discussing Spruce Street. And that immediately turned on a light bulb for me, uh, because we could do a more densified housing there. Easily, in my opinion. Um, for example, First and Spruce. Uh, development that just went through. Had I, or had we been able to give a third floor with a reduction in parking. There could have been an additional 10 or 12. Just for Jan, there would never have been a third floor. There would have been dormers. Dormers. Um, and, and that sort of leads me to another point. Currently, anything under six foot eight is not considered occupiable space. But we, we've done it in other places in the city, so. Now, you know, we narrow that and that goes along the lines of, uh, FAR as well. You know, the, the whole space is not considered occupable. Even though you may be able to be there. Right. But I, I, I really liked the idea of looking at Spruce Street. Because that may be the only open opportunity. Well, and, and to answer your question then, you know, what you get is the potential for some very attractive retail space without to. You know, 10 units that, that sell for $500,000, but then they're affordable. For a broader, um, population. Or not even selling, just. Depending on what the financial model, how it works out. Now, for that, we would also say, and we haven't gotten as far, that maybe 20% of it should be withheld for affordable housing. You know, so we get that additional benefit out of it.
Well, I, I mean, I remember when we were talking about that development. If I remember correctly, the stumbling block we always came across was. This is only going to last for 10 years, right? I mean, it's that same old thing that we were, in fact, we're talking about Sea Lark. Just a few minutes ago with, you know. Somehow we've got to get a grip on that because that is, if I remember correctly, that was really the big problem with.
Actually, the, the problem in that example was that there were then four or five. Single units that were going to be for sale. So that, that.
Density thing got into trouble.
That was a separate issue because the person wasn't willing to do a bunch of units that could be rented long term.
Right. It's, you know, try to incentivize the rental pool. Through the reduction in parking, uh, downtown and, uh, you know, listening to the, in the May where the. You know, our servers and our dishwashers are saying there's five 30 year olds living in a 2,000 square foot house. That's just ridiculous. That was 18, 20 years old in college doing that stuff and then 30, 35. If we don't incentivize that rental pool and, and apartments and such. We may be overlooking them.
Yeah.
Good opportunity. There, there's an opportunity to get a split, to get a mix, to get more affordable housing plus. Oh, yeah, it's definitely a balance. I agree with you.
What's, what's the plus?
The plus is the, the afford, the place that somebody can rent who is living, invite people to a house. You know, at an affordable price and then you get a bunch of bigger units that are selling for $500,000 a unit that may.
Why do we need to have the seller?
Because I don't know that everybody's business model is set up to rent. And, and the biggest money that they get, if you really want to incentivize housing, you have to give the developer an opportunity. To make a profit. And if you tell them, and I think this was a problem with First and Spruce, that, that applicant did not want to rent any of those. He wanted to make a profit.
This is where I think. It's a, these, this discussion has to be tied to some, whether it's the discussion on what the SDCs are. Or for example, working with the county and tax abidants, you can get incentive, you can get developers incentivized by waiving those taxes. By giving them breaks on parking. I'm just throwing out random ideas here, not random, but the top of mind. Getting rid of the parking requirements. And waiving SDCs, those are big chunks and that will be the difference for some of these developers between a green light and no way.
It could be. It could actually, you were going to respond to.
Nope.
So the, like an example that I was, I was just thinking of when you were talking about SDCs is I know somebody that's back here that's developing. They, they, it was an ADU that we approved on Spruce, um, a couple, a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Um, he's, um, like most of the way halfway done framing it or so. Um, I was talking to him the other day and he said it was. Total permitting for just the ADU was 11 grand.
I think that.
So there, so there's.
For 600 feet.
For, yeah, for, for rather, it's, it's a, it's a reasonable size. I, I live in six houses. So that's, for, for me, that's reasonable, but that's 11 grand for permitting SDCs, all, all, all the stuff that goes with.
Is that Mark Ward?
Yeah, yeah, Mark, Mark Ward.
Then he's just replacing a previous.
Oh, yeah.
E- exactly. So, so that's.
Him 11 grand to.
Yeah, it's, that's, that's what he.
Have to consult with public work. So I mean, we're cutting and.
Well, yeah, the, when you, when you speak of SDCs and things. Well, yeah, the, uh, when you, when you speak of SDCs and things like that, oftentimes you're talking with a developer. Or someone who's doing a decent sized project and you're talking development agreements and you're, there's, there's a, a bit more to this discussion, I'm sure. Clay, you're probably done, you know, enough in multifamily or whatever, but um, you know, there's a, you know, you, I I don't, oftentimes. You have a lot of pre meetings ahead of time to get to that point, to say, hey, I wanna bring this type of development here. I'm, I'm looking at the affordability, it's gonna cost me this, where are the breaks that I can receive from you to give me some incentives? To make it happen, otherwise I'm going market rate. Um, so, so in, in a lot of the developments, I would say, previously, it was. A lot of stuff getting hammered out early in the game to try to be like, okay, we're gonna provide. X amount of investment in your community at this level of rent. And so our gap in our financing is going to be X. So how are we gonna negotiate this so that? You're, it's gonna be a public private partnership if we're gonna get this um, uh, project off the ground and and provided for your community. And that means there's probably gonna have to be some incentives and whether that's SDCs or something, not just anything. But if you get the affordability and you get to to that point, there's probably gonna be, it would probably have to be like development agreements. And maybe that's something that Cannon Beach hasn't had that much of, because there hasn't been, you know, a lot of big developments, you know? So so we're kinda going into areas and and probably the only area that I could see something like that. Is maybe the RV park if it ever got there. I mean, there would probably be some discussions and and, you know. Uh, a lot of behind the scenes before it even got to this level. Um, negotiating those dollars and incentives and costs and what type of uh potential homes you would see. So, um, I mean, they're out there.
For a developer. For a developer, this works at scale. So I I still don't understand why we're not talking about. Uh, South Wind in some fifty unit, all affordable housing project that could be built. By a developer, they'll make their money, it would be income limited. Fifty units, forty units would be the smallest, up to a hundred units. And that's all, I mean, we're talking about very piecemeal, one, one here, maybe one there. Maybe another one over here. Why are we not talking about a bigger development?
We, we actually were, Aaron, and I, we need to, but but we felt like we didn't have the expertise or that, well, how did, how did it play out?
Well, you know, South, South Winds and all these sounds, sites look good on paper, but when you physically walk them. And see the, the scale, slopes and the wetlands and everything involved. You know, we're talking significant infrastructure uh development and we're doing lots of works from a city perspective. In terms of financing and uh water resiliency and different types of developments that the city.
But it solves the problem if, what, the city doesn't have the funds, is that, i- i- I mean, I, I, I don't know if that's accurate. I think the city, I think we have the funds. If we have to raise property taxes a little bit to to solve the housing crisis, why not do it?
So I I think the, the reason we got off of the discussion of that is because most of what we were discussing was uh code amendment changes. That's, that's what we were set out to init- to do initially. And the South Wind proposal, the RV Park proposal were more policy partnership discussions. Not code amendment changes. So that's, that's, I think that's how we ended up off of it. But then with, with this, the part B that's in here, we're kind of shifting more towards also still talking, going back to talking about policy implementation. So it's her kind of talking about, that, that, that's how we ended up getting off of it and that's why we kind of stopped talking.
We just realized we, we didn't have.
Characterized as that we, we put it on the, um, we set it aside so we could get the middle housing and downtown code amendments done. But we have definitely not let the RV site off the radar, but we've decided that in order to, it seemed like. The easiest site to get a lot of affordable housing, although I wanna caveat that we're not gonna pour. Only affordable housing on that site. We, we talked about that the best vision is a mix of housing types. Really thinking holistically about how that area over there could be a better neighborhood, et cetera. Um, so it's a mix of housing types and a mix of levels of affordability, mix of rental and homeownership. That's the vision for that area, but to achieve that vision takes a lot more than a zoning code amendment. And we decided just set this aside for a moment. We do have the expertise and. It within, I think, the larger county group, there's a lot of interest in helping Cannon Beach execute that project on that. Eight project like that on that site, but for now, we wanted to focus on the code amendments. I don't, I wanna make it really clear that it was not forgotten.
Just we weren't ready. I didn't feel like we were ready. I don't, I'm, you know, Steve, anyway.
I do, I wanna say one last thing is that there was um a need for direction to move. Because to pursue that site, all of the more complex, sort of beyond zoning code issues that would have to be. Addressed and resources and skills that would have to be brought together to make that happen. Um, this required direction beyond what this project has the mandate to do.
So coming back.
I guess I don't understand, I don't understand how Tillamook is ready, how Warrington is ready, how they're building large scale.
That's why they're not doing anything.
I'm sorry, Tillamook isn't building.
Said they're not, because that's why they're not doing anything. They have the same issues. They don't have capacity. Otherwise, they would have uh construction taking place.
I was under the understanding that, that Mark Desgrove Greenlight Development is building a forty plus unit building in Tillamook right now.
Oh, until what, maybe, I, you, you mentioned Warranton.
Tillamook, sorry, I said Tillamook and Warranton, Tillamook.
That could be, I'm sorry, I, I would thought we were talking Warranton.
Hey, may I add something to that discussion? Because that's very interesting. I just wanna point out that Tillamook County passed an amendment to this. A senate bill that's makes every city in Tillamook County, no matter how small it is. Same as a large city and it is required now, Mantanita is in the process of doing this. Um, changing their zoning code to allow all of those middle housing types that we discussed. And and it's not tied to affordability or tenures, they're just changing their zoning code. And as a result, they, the reason that the legislators in Tillamook did this. Is because they thought it would attract more state funding for infrastructure and in fact, Mantanita now has seven point one million dollars to apply. To a site that they're planning to develop that. I mean, it's just, it's what Alyssa keeps saying. The zoning code is a simple first step, you get on the radar of the state to say like, we're serious about making a change. Then other things follow, other policies that help you achieve of the housing follow. And so it's, it's a kind of different world in Tillamook County and that's why that topic in Tillamook is happening. We don't have said made it a priority to do housing.
My friend is building a large, a large building in Tillamook, all affordable. We can't, we can't even build one ADU affordable in Cannon Beach. It's just depressing.
Anybody else wanna speak? So I just was going to answer, I think, Marcy UK here saying, what should we do next? My personal sense is that I like the ideas in part A, but only if they're implemented at the same time that the policy is implemented. To ensure that it's targeted toward people who are planning to live here long term or be a part of the community long term, however we wanna call that. That's, that would be my direction to to bring together A and B and accept that that process will be more complex, but. Gets us what we want. And I'm afraid of, yes, fear is the, the word. Of only implementing part A and it could take us years and years to come to part B and by that time, what little space. Could have been dedicated to either affordable or long term housing has already been built as a second home.
May, I ask for a couple of more subtle clarifications. So the one thing is, does, it sounds like tenure is the more. Is the, is the threshold that people are uncomfortable setting, that seems to be, be um. Setting a threshold for tenure, requiring housing that's built under these amendments to only be set up for a certain tenure. Arrangement seems to be the direction as opposed to affordability.
So it does, I'm thinking of Michelle's comment earlier. Michelle said very specifically, people that she knows don't. Have to worry about how much they're making. And that seems to be consistent with much of the testimony that we heard as well earlier. That the concern was more about just having housing available, especially for rentals. Rather than being tied to particular affordability. I think we have an affordability issue as well personally. But it, my sense from the community is that bigger picture is just making sure it's available to people who are living and working here.
So if I could just try to articulate your direction, your direct.
Yeah, just what my thought.
What your thoughts are on the direction. It is part B with a focus on tenure.
And I think viewing part A is every single piece you have in part A, viewing it as a giveback. So each one of those would not be an outright, but rather as a giveback for a particular type of housing.
So my other question is, does that, should that approach apply to the R one, R two zone? Should it also apply to the downtown mixed use zone?
I think I don't have a stronger sense about how the downtown mixed use. Would look if we didn't have those same restrictions in place. I think we would still need them in place, but I do understand that First and Downtown already has some limits on how the housing can be used within our zoning code.
But we have to change those to enable.
And so I think it would be checking our code as it is. Deciding what does it take to ensure that even downtown, if we're adding units, it is available to people who actually live here. Vote here, however you wanna do it. Show me your voter card, I don't know, right? But something tied to availability for people who are actually. Here on a long term basis. And I think another point that we didn't get to yet, but. How do we feel about duplexes versus ADUs? As I understand, a duplex can be condoized. And do we need to think through that process carefully?
We're in the process of kinda deciding whether ADUs or duplexes are the.
Yeah.
But I think next time we meet, we'll probably have that fleshed out.
Okay, and just as long as it's on someone's radar.
Provide some information about what DLCT requires for ADUs.
Okay.
Useful for everybody now. Right now, ADU, you, cities, no matter how small. Are required to allow you, they're required to require parking space. They're not required to allow them to go through design review and they're not, uh, I'm sorry, cities are not allowed to require. Um, them to go through, cities are not allowed to require an ADU to be owner occupied. And uh, looking into what I can, um, I think we do need to get a land use attorney involved in this. But what I can tell is that uh ADUs can be condoized and your rule is a local rule, which is probably not. It's probably wouldn't stand.
Okay.
Especially under the current um fair housing compliance pushed by this state.
And so the, our, our existing rule about condoized is along the same lines as our rule about having to go to DRB. That is violating state law.
You know, I'll say I don't know for sure, but I think it, it's probably very questionable and we would have to look into that. Right now, it says that um, the accessory dwelling shall remain in the same ownership as the primary dwelling. The accessory dwelling shall not be sold as a separate real or personal property. And I'm just not sure that's gonna stand up at the state level.
And I think one of the things that w- w- when we kinda came full circle in a lot of our discussion at the last housing meeting was. The, we are going away from the ADU, but some of the language in the ADU is what we like in terms of some of that language. So I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but it's something that we definitely need to find out from our attorneys, because I think, um. And and I don't know if everyone received the letter, uh, Councillor Kerr submitted a letter, so I wanted to make sure she kind of. Uh, addresses that in her letter, but that was in a roundabout fashion, some of the discussion that we ended up with at the last meeting. That we were, you know, looking at, so I'm not saying it's wrong or right, but it was something that everyone thought, wow, that might resolve our issue. So, so it's something I think we need to clarify, because I thought everyone really felt that was language. If it's, you know, uh, legal, that really addressed some of the concerns about selling. And having it in one ownership, which would likely then lead to a rental.
Mickey, can I ask one more? How do you feel about Hemlock versus Spruce for no sales?
I don't think I have a preference there. I'm not gonna wade into that one, to be honest.
Sort of thought in terms of just practically like. How many lots are really possibly on the table for development? I mean, some of those just. We might have like two lots.
We, we were concerned that if we turn it loose and create an environment. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of speculation going on if you open this up and don't have the appropriate controls. We were thinking the entire Hemlock would be scraped, was a potential. And you'd put a bunch of bigger units like White Bird and they'd line our Hemlock Street, you know?
That's the thing with Hemlock is, I don't know, I, I've been underneath those buildings in Hemlock.
Yeah, well, the land is pretty bad.
And it's, it's, it's a constructability uh aspect as well. They're all tied together. They're on fairly unstable foundations. The opportunities such as like the gas station, which is a single lot, which could be developed, newly developed. And is a much more realistic opportunity, but these, the connection between the rest of them. Uh, will become a constructability issue.
Not only just in fire, but fire life safety, but also foundation. We're concerned also that the one lot that's available may not be billable. For a variety of reasons, so. That, that, that would be the exception. That would be the exception. We could, we could leave the gas station there and then we'd have a line of. White bird on both sides of the street.
I think wasn't the thought a little bit with regards to Spruce is that. Slow, small step, yet possibly available and that it might make sense to see how it works in that section. Basically from first to second.
Right, I, that was exactly, it was containing, if if we screw up, we've contained it at least and we might.
And I guess the converse of that is, there's not a lot of places on Hemlock to screw up, so why not limit it there? I, I, I didn't come into that question in terms of whether both are just one with. Many kind of clear direction, but I guess it doesn't hurt to just do one. We don't have a lot of options on the other anyway, and we can kind of control the process a little, I think I'd be okay.
We'd have to, the only thing with Spruce is that we'd have to look at offsetting the parking, because that's where majority of the parking for downtown is.
Yeah, and that's, that would be the condition. We'd give up parking and a bunch of other stuff.
And a lot of those spaces are leased out to. Buildings, businesses around that area. So, um, I, I still like the idea, Spruce, I, I. Really think that's a possibility, but there's a lot of minutia that we'd have to weed through to get there.
Not really, I'm just thinking. So when you kept saying Spruce, what you were, what you were describing was the downtown parking lot.
No, no, it was more like.
That's where I was thinking, between first and second is is the part of.
And I, and I was thinking.
Second and third. E Cola to Johnson.
I was thinking, I was thinking second to third, but either one, I mean, if you, if you were successful on one, it would be. Nice to migrate it to the other, assuming no parking isn't an issue. I mean, taking away the parking spots that we were, I was, I was worried about preserving those parking spots. I was thinking second.
And that was something that occurred to me, you know, I mean, I, Michelle's part of the group, so she's a business owner, but I. I can't imagine that the business owners downtown are gonna be all that happy with losing a bunch of parking. At least they would like to be involved in that discussion.
That, that was my fault. I said the wrong blocks. It was basically kinda, I think, Bay Area, correct me if I'm right, from basically like E Cola to. Uh, to Johnson's Realty.
Yeah, yeah.
And and kind of as you enter the city.
Oh, I set second up to third.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I said.
Would be a logical place to start.
Because that would be an opportunity to get the density in there that I think we're looking for.
Right.
Whether it's commercial and residential or strictly residential. I like the idea of commercial and residential offsets. It creates street fronts.
That also creates an environment where people can gather.
Right. And people, I mean, you know, we're talking to Cola, we're talking in the chocolate factory.
It's a wonderful feel. Yeah.
But rather than going into Hemlock and just decimating the character of Cannon Beach by either new construction or rebuilding, I'm not quite on board with that yet.
I would hope that we would have some incentive for maintaining the structures that exist, both the essentials, for instance, and other wonderful, I love old homes. So I have a thing for keeping old homes. But our old downtown buildings, even if they're structurally not all that sound, they are what Cannon Beach is to most people.
And there's the ability to retrofit, and Marcy probably speaks for that as well, is that there is the ability to retrofit. There is a cost to it, but we can improve those, just like improve the fire station.
Yeah, but I think holding on to the appearance is really critical.
Definitely.
I think that one of the things that things that's holding just upgrades back is the parking requirement. I mean, I can't. What I know from doing this work in so many cities is that parking requirement is killing any aspiration for even just improving a building or changing its occupancy. I mean,
I agree a hundred percent.
We have to be real about that. So I do think that a lot of buildings can be rehabilitated if you allow the parking, event the parking relief.
And that might be another requirement we could impose upon. Hemlock is go ahead and rebuild, upgrade your building and you'll get parking relief if you do it, but.
Spruce?
Or no, Hemlock, on Hemlock. If you got, if you went from Spruce and said, okay, we're ready to take on Hemlock now, there's a different set of asks and one may be, you keep the structure, the facade, you can put another structure behind it, you know?
Now, we do have the Affordable Housing Fund, which every permit pays into, correct? And that, you know, as Steve knows, CLAR is the only one that's taking advantage of that. And that was.
Yeah, we have $500,000 or somewhere.
Couldn't that be used to offset the SDC breaks or?
There are some restrictions on it. We need to look and we had that discussion and we haven't really dug into what that fund can be used for, but.
It's just sitting there and you want to, you know, try to really hot poker this.
Wasn't that for writing down interest rates or something like that? We could apply it to.
I think I think what we were really looking at was the affordability aspect.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell, that what we keep talking about, what that was for. It was, and that's why.
Whatever, whatever that was.
It was, it there was, they receive some incentives dollar wise to do part of the construction based on the fact that those rents would be limited for X amount of years.
500,000 in offsetting $6,000 to $8,000 of SDCs, that's going to go a long way.
Am I?
Do you want to see, would it be useful, since we're talking about Spruce and Hemlock and parking or no parking requirement in Florida? Could we bring up the images from the charrette that we did for the downtown? Because I feel.
I don't know if I have those, Marcy. They're asking off. No, I'm definitely shutting down though. Let me see what I can do and.
On a roll, I feel like I'm getting.
Are you looking for the actual diagrams or just like aerials?
You know about it?
Yeah.
No, no.
When you say that to my email.
Somebody that.
Sent it to.
Simple.
Yeah.
I see that.
Because I'm the second S in that kiss principle.
No, you're not. I know better.
Mercy, that the parking, you know, you know, I've looked at that as, you know, a studio apartment, that person is working, you know, within a quarter mile of, may not own a car or may not need a car.
Yeah.
I, you know, we, I don't like to call Cannon Beach the walkable city, but I mean, we're, if we have that availability to live and work within that a walkable environment.
Maybe.
Cutting out that parking requirement or giving five million would be an advantage.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, hey, I mean. I might, I might have got it.
Oh, you know what? There's, there's two that look identical. You don't want that one.
How you doing?
Um, I'm excited.
Yeah, it might be. I'm enjoying that allows you to share.
Whatever.
Get some. I'm kind of flying it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think Michelle wants to be recognized.
Absolutely.
All right, go ahead, Michelle.
I'm sure you're aware that there's, that we pay for parking downtown too. So I walk all the time. Takes me 15, if that, minutes. So, yeah, I just got my bill for $250 to pay for parking. That's just my self-interest part. I prefer to not have.
Is that a month?
No.
Okay.
It's a year. It's 125 or something square foot, whatever. And it's just like, every time I get.
Threat testing graphics?
But.
Threat testing graphics?
You're just talking about that. It's my little self-interest.
You know, and it doesn't seem fair either, Michelle. We need to look at that. Yeah, so.
So while we're bringing it up, or while Steve is trying to bring it up. But so I was interested to hear that Tillamook County has made an election that simply, would that take this whole discussion and make it all a moot point?
Nope, and make it a lot harder because we'd have to rush like hell. And some of the things that we've talked about not being ready for, and like understanding where infrastructure is and land.
I don't know, Marcy, I got this thing and it's not.
It'd take us some time. We'd be rushing.
My, my, my understanding is it just basically says, so like, the only town in Clatsop County that has to follow those rules is Astoria. And so they would basically say that all the rules that Astoria has to follow in terms of allowing housing and permitting all of this stuff, everyone within Clatsop County has to, and that's, that's what.
Now have flexibility to structure the way.
I, I, I don't think the city of Cannon Beach wants to do that.
Yep.
Why not?
Why not? Because I don't know how excited everyone is to be forced to do the housing supply and get under the amount of housing that's going to be right, required by the state of Oregon. And I think if we have concerns about single family homes, we're going to have a lot bigger problems. So I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we have to vary. I, I was surprised Tillamook County did it. For like small communities.
Yeah. I was driving through an unnamed town.
Yeah, I get all of that, Marcy.
One of our neighboring counties. And someone said to me, wow, this town is really cool until you hit about here. And then it's not cool anymore. And I just thought, well, that's when people stop paying attention. And that's the first thing I thought when that came up in those other counties is, oh, well, what an easy way to get through a really tricky conversation. Wouldn't you just love to hit the easy button? But then now all of a sudden it's messy and, you know, that line that we have drawn and we've protected in this city is compromised.
I mean.
It makes sense to me. Honestly, that would turn into the easy button from us, but it's not the pretty button. It's, it's, it would basically be, well, the county told us, we'll have to do X, Y, and Z. There's nothing we can do.
Had that.
They were out of their meeting.
Approximate date.
Exactly.
Can share my screen.
Because I, I got the email, but I'm clicking on the PDF and it is not allowing me to open it.
Um, is Marcy on Zoom now?
Oh, wait a second. Now we might have gotten it. I've been clicking it.
Okay, great. So can you, let me walk off. Do you mind going to this, wait, is it near the end?
Yep. I was clicking on this thing like a madman.
One term, so.
Share is the numbers.
Yeah.
But there's.
That's the answer to your question.
Want to control this and show the one.
And I have started breaking down.
We did control.
Hey, before, Steve, before you jump off there, I do not, Eric has pointed out that or wanted to make sure that the screen is being shared so that people online. I, I believe you just have it up on your screen and it's not actually visible.
At testing participants or. You are correct.
There we go. Cool.
And so we, you remember that we, those who participated in the charrette, remember that we looked at three-story buildings downtown with a third story like Whitebird Gallery or Tuck behind Dormer. We also looked at midtown buildings that are two stories when we were, we did this because we wanted to look at, you know, what you would see downtown. And then we also looked at these like at the street level to see how large and looming they are. I think that was a concern that buildings that tall with a third story, say residential in a dormer would, that that would change the character of the street. And so here we have two buildings that are, that are tall, two stories tall, but they, they, I don't, I think people generally under, agree that they do not loom, but then we talked about the height that you have right now and how if we would allow a third story in a dormer like this one, this is the dormer version. This is the step back version. Again, looking at what examples that you currently have, you know, there now.
And I, and I think the dormer version was at 28 feet, wasn't it?
Correct.
Which is, which is our height.
Sorry. They, we set the, the height of at exactly the same height just to be.
Yes.
Distinct.
Yep.
Um, so then I also wanted to show these kind of parking studies. And I think this, now that we're talking about possibly Spruce, I think this is applicable to Spruce as well. As it's been mentioned, there's a lot of land to develop behind these sites. What you need for a mixed use building is relatively shallow. So this model here was the test that we did with using all your current parking requirements in order to get some housing on an upper story. And you can see that most of the site is the parking that you require plus the landscaping. And you don't get very much housing. It's probably not even an economically feasible building. So then we looked at, could you have a building like Whitebird, you know, kind of spread over the course of a block with a third story in a dormer? And it would be mixed use. You would still have that requirement for ground floor retail. But maybe allow, you know, pull the requirement for ground floor retail from the rear of the site so that you can have an all residential building. And of course, this has no parking requirement. So this is, you know, kind of pushing the envelope, so to speak, but that was to illustrate the vast difference between what you will see now with your parking requirement and what you might see if you were able to manage parking in the downtown on a more, in a more holistic way and not on a site by site basis. And this would then feel probably a lot like the section of Hemlock that we consider sort of the the heart of downtown, let's say, because Hemlock was built before the parking requirements. So we're talking about a similar density to that, right?
Right. Are you, I mean, to, to make your point, we're talking about, I think, buildings like these, right?
Yeah. Which makes up pretty much the entire stretch of downtown Hemlock for the most part.
There are a lot of single, I mean, I should say there are single story buildings sprinkled in here, but, but I think we were trying to, we were trying to make it clear that you do have three-story buildings downtown. While there's a fear of three-story buildings, just like, look at your downtown. Look at the heart of your downtown. Anyway.
And that's mostly because there's set within what yours, the dormers, rather than being a a single three-story mass.
Yeah.
Rectangular mass.
In the joint session, that was definitely the agreement.
Whitebird works. You know, you don't even see that third story because it's set back a little bit.
It's the, the same for the, for the old mall, the Sesame Mill, Sesame Lilies. It's, it's in a step back. It does have a third story, but it's in a step back.
So could we look at, which is one thing to consider would be applying that kind of idle scenario that came out of the charrette for parking relief to a sort of experimental segment of Spruce? Okay, that's the only one I just.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. So Miki offered thought on what we have here tonight, you know, incorporating these two pieces together? How do other people feel about that sort of a direction? These nodding heads. Yeah, I'm, I'm much more in favor of, we've, we've discussed affordability and tenure. I'm much more kind of affordability for the time being and focusing on figuring out how to manage and implement tenure requirements on, on, on these, these potential givebacks that are in here. Just that seems like the more equitable way to achieve, but seems to be the goal is what, what the community has told us they want. They want to be able to live here. They want to not have to report their income. They want to be able to be flexible in terms of taking a job, not taking, whatever it is. And then not also have, and avoiding the fair housing requiring employment within town sort of thing. So just being in the house, in the house, in the, in the rental, whatever it is.
Just having the ability to.
Yeah, exactly. Have, having the housing available for people that want to physically be in Cannon Beach.
Yeah. And I think I'd agree with that. I mean, exactly the way you described it. I think availability, it trumps affordability to some degree. Still not quite clear on how to be sure that it's long, you know, maybe it turns into a second home. But I guess we'll continue to work on that.
I'm going to do a little research. I, I've worked with a couple of developers that toe that line. They got the benefit.
Interesting.
Um, but they were either 100% or 120% of AMI in order to get the benefit, but to make sure that, you know, they, they, it, it was a market rate deal, but it had a lot of assistance in getting done. So I'll find out, I'll talk to some of the jurisdictions that had those in. We just sold a building in Camas that allowed it. I don't think they allow it anymore, so I'd like to find out why they didn't like it. And then I'll talk to some of the developers and that I know are using that tool to make these projects and see what they say and come back and see if I can find anything and I'll share that. Yeah, I, I think that'd be super useful getting on the ground of what's actually happened in, in projects. Because a lot of what we've, we've discussed is we think this, we could see it doing this. And it's, a lot of the discussion has been around our fears and what we, what we think as opposed to having, having the raw data of this has been a proven plan that has worked in X number of towns and it's something, and this is the way it's worked.
Right.
Or not worked.
My only, my only thought is I think this whole issue of parking is still needs to be bought through the, I think, I think like Marcy, I think said, parking may actually be that keystone that makes everything work or keeps everything from working right now. You know, and I don't know, one of the questions was, do we, you know, is that a cart launch? You just get rid of the parking requirement or do you turn around and you just, you just offer it in, you know, as a, as an incentive? Versus if you're doing that downtown, we don't have enough parking now. So how? I don't know. I just think that's a very powerful tool, but I'm not sure that you know exactly what's going to happen if you were to, you know, if you were to flip that switch.
Well, one good thing is if we limit it to Spruce, we can, we can kind of limit the test case. Because parking down there is going to be, that's going to be the, that has been the biggest challenge. And I think for me, just thinking about that same issue, I've gone with that balance of it. And I've heard business owners say it's terrible down here parking. So where is our balance as we consider the needs of those people who can't afford to live down there versus those people who were serving by offering public, by offering parking so they can visit us, offering parking so they can have customers. And I, and I'm not saying it's, it's all or nothing. It's just, we just, we're weighing that in my mind.
Yeah, you know, I agree.
And it's out of balance right now. So where is that balance? That's for us to talk about and kind of decide.
You know, the transportation system plan that we looked through a couple of years ago, parking and, and traffic are interrelated were the biggest complaint.
Hmm. There's some options in there and I think as I thought Marcy had informed City Council that parking is an issue that needs to be resolved and we should be doing it in parallel with all this, but we haven't found the resource.
I would agree. I think parking is.
Well, and to Jay's point, you know, and I don't know how granular we can get on this, but if you are offering housing in the place people work and the place where people want to live and the place they can shop, you know, maybe there's not as many cars.
Uh, one of the, I remember the, the debates and the dialogue around the, the, the transportation system plan. You know, and, and I think at least I, what I came, came to is we did not need more parking. We needed less parking in some sense because we're just overwhelmed. You couldn't keep up. And I kind of hear that, you know, in this conversation, sort of, you know, it's the dynamics between parking and how people choose to live is hard to understand.
Well, not, not to go too far off into the TSP tangent, seems like we're kind of going that way, but, uh, the, in terms of needing more parking, not needing more parking, it's more, I, I felt much of that conversation revolved more around we need more efficient use of the parking and more efficient use of the management of how, how do people determine that there is, is or not, isn't parking in a particular area and how do they find that parking? And then, or get out of that area and look somewhere else for parking rather than.
Yeah.
What happens is just circle, 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 circle. So that's, if, if you eliminate the parking department, you get more density of stuff there. Then how do you then tie that together with a management plan to ensure that the visitors to town know that there is not, not going to be parking in this area. You need to move to this other area where there is likely to be more parking.
Compensating for what we take away.
E- exactly. Well, and we're, we're already in a situation where in George Vedder said it years ago, that once parking is full, town is full. So you add more parking, now you're going to overfill. It's, it's kind of a give, a give, a give and take. So if you take, if you take some parking away, then you're reducing the number of people that can be trolling the streets, like walking the streets because they've parked to visit the shops and all that stuff. But then how, how do you make sure that they're getting into a parking spot so that they can then get out of their car and, and shop and get out of their car and go to the beach and enjoy it? Whether or not there's the same number of spots now or, or ten less spots or a hundred more spots, whichever.
And efficiency.
Yeah.
Marcy, are you feeling like you have?
Uh, yes.
Enough to.
I'm hearing pursue part A at the same time as part B. Part B with a focus on tenure. R one and R two for sure. And, uh, pursue the, what was proposed for hemlock or spruce instead. In terms of actually moving into code amendments.
I think that's a fair assessment. Does anyone disagree with that?
Agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Marcy. Anything else? Anyone like that? Will we move on?
I just want to say we have, um, another package. I don't think that people, I'm, I'm reluctant to go start going into the maintenance pack, part of the package. Short-term rental, accessory dwelling unit. Should we just hold that for another?
I think so.
I, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I make one more comment? Um, just so everyone knows, there was the discussion about getting rid of the short-term rentals out of the zoning ordinance and more into the business section. Um, we've submitted the Papa notice, the DLCD. Um, it's likely that you will be reviewing that in September. Um, and so again, all that was, was leaving it exactly as it is written, but just removing it from the zoning ordinance and putting it into the municipal code. And that was direction that was given at the design, you know, the, the last work session. And then the council told staff, go ahead and start that process. And then, uh, because we felt that it should be in more of the business section. So then what would happen is uh, it'll go through the same process we've done with the amendments, the wetlands, the reorg. So it's going to go through that process. And then at the time, the housing, um, amendments would be done. We would also be working in such a way that the tweaks to the short-term rentals would be on a similar path. But when it got to council for actual action, those items would be basically taken on consecutively. So there wouldn't be any type of overlap or, or a timeframe where someone could take advantage of, you know, hey, now we can have short-term everywhere or whatever. So, um, so I just wanted people to know that. So we're going to, that'll be coming in September, strictly just moving it. And then we'll continue to work on the amendments. And then when these come to council, they'll be looking at both this and any tweaks to the short term. I don't know if that makes sense, but I can explain it to you again in September.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Marcy. That was very helpful.
Thanks, Mar.
Okay. On to our pre-report.
Um, let's see here, in July, there were a total of fourteen trees that were removed. And the required replanting was nine of those fourteen.
Questions about that? Okay, for the good of the order. You want to have anything for the good of the order? Jake, what have you been provided in terms of information packets, links to some of the videos we've been through as a body?
Um, I have requested two tests, I mean, like in regards to the three that we went through earlier, just background information on them.
Like the what?
The, the first.
Oh, the tree, did you say tree?
Yeah, the, um, consideration, then it's in the action item. Grant, I did not speak on that. I requested the information based on that.
We'll trickle those to you. It could be kind of overwhelming at first to, to see all of that. I was thinking more in terms of like, uh, the Oregon, uh, Planning Commissioner's Handbook.
Um, yes.
We have videos on, you know, the question on, uh, uh, conflict of interest.
Yes.
A couple of great, uh, sessions we've been through as a body, get your links to those.
Jennifer Barrett actually provided me.
You have it. Okay. And the commission.
Um, I don't know about that.
Okay.
We can look for that one.
Please.
And, but yeah, Jen was able to provide them stuff and that's where we talked, just talking to the ethics commission and then providing the training that we have still on the, um, web links that's been provided.
Sure.
So we've provided that and then obviously we can talk whenever.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate you, uh, leading with the, with the concern tonight. And, you know, we'll just have a conversation as we need to around that. Um, great to have you on board.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Speaking of that, I think Oregon Ethics Commission just sent an email that they have like a September seventeenth training. I think I'm going to sign up for it. Just out of curiosity, but you could look on their website, got a training coming up related to ethics of some kind. So maybe.
Do you want to, I can maybe look that, but do you want to send that to me and I can send that to the group?
Yeah.
Great. Great. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? I'm going to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good discussion.
For picking up with.
Thank you, Steve. That was, that was heroic. I, I appreciate that you guys got up there and did it.
Was panic there?